We'd like to welcome you all here tonight. Before we get started, if you would please join me in our Pledge of Allegiance and a brief invocation led by Dale Tyler.
(inaudible)
Howard Austin.
Here.
Ray Cardiell.
Here.
Mark Cloud.
Here.
Gary Compton.
Here.
Brent Couch.
Here.
Chris Hussein.
Here.
Jennifer Keith.
Here.
Teresa Reynolds.
Here.
Dale Tyler.
Everybody's here, thank you. I'd entertain a motion for the approval of the April 2nd, 2024 minutes at this time.
So motion.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that passes unanimously, thank you. Patsy, we've got a couple tabled items tonight. Do you want to review those and then we'll have a motion to approve that amended agenda?
Our 2419, the Elder Jones Construction rezoning request has been tabled. The, I think there's one more, right? The variance request by Donna Wright Builders at 403 Charles Avenue have both been tabled. Those will both be heard at the beginning of the next meeting in June.
Can I get a motion to approve our amended agenda? Thank you, Ray Cardiell.
Second.
All right, a second by Brent, thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes unanimously. Before we get started with the agenda tonight, I just wanted to say something in a way personal from me. March was National Women's History Month. You may have seen a little article in the paper. We had two people from our area that were recognized. One was Marcia Jones, who I had the pleasure of working with in the Springdale School District. None finer. She was absolutely a genius at what she did. She worked here long and hard, did everything in her power for kids. She was truly a really great person to work with. Good picture of her in the paper. The other one was our own Patsy Christie, who is featured for all of the work that she's done with the city here, and I just thought I'd mention that. There's a lot of work that goes on that you all don't see, sometimes we don't even see it, but in honor of those two women from Washington County, I just thought I'd mention that in their honor, and if you would, please recognize Patsy for all this. Thanks. All right, off we go. Our 2411, these are some tabled items from last month. Patsy?
The first one is a rezoning request by Gary and Connie Eldridge at the west side of North Graham Road, the north of the proposed 412 bypass. I think Cory, are you here to represent this rezoning request? You want to come up to the podium and tell us about what we're looking at?
Do I need to state my name? Okay, Cory Bussie, representing the Mr. and Mrs. Eldridges. So what we're looking at rezoning is three acres just north of the proposed bypass that's coming in. It's actually the, I guess, a long line there, I guess that'd be the south line. That is running along the new highway. So, and then the east line is Graham Road, North Graham Road, which is becoming a cul-de-sac at that point. So we're looking to turn that to an I-1 to put in a shop and a lot for our equipment.
The comprehensive land use plan indicates low density residential use for this piece of property, but with the opening of the 412 bypass in this location, we're creating a different scenario in this whole area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plans recommended for approval. Ensure adequate land allocation for industrial growth protected from encroachment by non-industrial uses. Consolidate industrial areas near traffic arteries and collectors, rail and air facilities, and major utility truck lines.
Thank you, Patsy. Are there any questions or comments from the audience members? If not, any questions or comments from commissioners? If not, this would be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you, call for the vote.
Who did the call? Who made the call? Ray? Ray? Okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't there.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler.
Motion passes nine zero, thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on May the 28th.
Okay, excuse me. Thank you. We've got another tabled item, R-24-14 Elm Springs Apartment. This is from a PUD to a revised POT, PUD presented by Crafton and Toll.
Connor Threake with Crafton Toll. We've seen this one a couple times before. We're adding about 41 parking spots, that's why it's coming back in front of you. Most of those are on the western half of this project near what you're seeing is 1A and 1B. Some of these new parking spaces are near those bigger buildings. Lower's green space, of course, a hair, but we're still over the requirement.
In staff comments, in 2022, there was Ramsey at Springdale. A plan to develop was approved for a 13.9 acre tract containing 272 apartment units, a density of 24 units per acre. At the southeast corner of the intersection by Mills Road and Oak Grove Road, the project was a single-phase development. As you said, their proposal is to amend the parking spaces to add additional parking, increase it to 490 spaces. The percentage of green space is reduced from 41% to 39.5. All other provisions of the PUD development remain in place, and the proposed amendment is recommended for approval.
Thank you, Patsy. Any comments from the audience on this issue? If not, comes to the commission. If there are no questions or comments, this would be a call for the vote as well.
Curious, what led to adding parking spaces? Was it, you don't mind speaking to that?
Yeah, the ownership originally wanted us to hit the minimum number of parking spaces, which happens a lot. And then they kind of got to construction and realized, well, we probably need a couple more visitor spaces mainly. We have about 50 garages, you know, those can kind of come and go when you're, you know, leasing this stuff out, so there's needed more in the area mainly for visitors parking than anything.
Thanks. Thanks, Mark. This would be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Cardiell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, nine zero, thank you. All right.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 28th.
Next on the agenda is R-2415, with a couple preliminary plats as well that would be added to that. This is presented, we've got a, from a PUD to a revised PUD. D.R. Horton, this is the Northwest Arkansas LLC. That would be a call for the vote. This is going to be presented by Strand Architecture and Engineering and D.R. Horton.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Stewart with Strand, representing D.R. Horton. Essentially, this PUD has been seen multiple times before, and I guess with this iteration, we just increased the building setback lines to include additional parking on street.
Okay, and you're changing all of the lot setbacks to 35 feet?
Correct, yep. So right now, it's 25 feet, and we are going to change everything to 35 feet from Phase Two to Four.
Okay, and you do have some on-street parking that you're leaving, you're not taking any of those off?
Correct, yes ma'am. The current on-street parking that we are showing will stay.
Okay, so all of the lots will now have 35 feet, and that's not Phase One because it's already been platted?
Correct.
It's the two and four that are left?
Correct, yes ma'am.
And then three you'll come back with when we move forward with that, that Phase One, because it's different?
Correct.
Okay. This was originally approved in 2020. It's a 106-acre tract located on Hilton Road, south of Willie George. The name of the PUD was changed to Brentwood Village, and as we talked about, the building setbacks will be changed to 35 feet, which allows for more parking in the driveways. And we need to add the following note. Exterior building materials located eight feet or closer to the property line must be that of non-combustible type. Examples included but not limited to stucco, brick, manufactured stone, and concrete siding. You guys got all that? That note needs to be on it too. That meets the fire code issues.
Correct.
You guys do it, but we want to make sure it's on the plat so we have it in the future.
Yes, and that should be included in the current PUD that you guys have.
I just want to get it in the record here, so it's on the record there too. All of the provisions of the PUD development remains in place, and the proposed amendment is recommended for approval.
Thanks, Patsy. When all four phases are complete, how many total units would be there?
I believe it's close to 430. I think so, I think it's right around the 400.
All right, okay.
Not counting.
430, single-family.
Yeah, not counting the multifamily that we haven't done anything.
Correct.
Good, thank you. Any comments from the audience on this issue? This would come to the-
We do have some few staff comments, though.
Okay, staff comments?
On the revision- Oh, sorry, on the plats, not the reason.
We're just talking about the revision to the PUD first. We'll get to the plats in just a minute.
We'll come back to the plats in just one minute. If there are no audience comments, any comments from the commission? Hearing none, if there were none, this would be a call for the vote on the revised PUD.
Call for the vote.
Thank you, Mark.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiell?
Yes.
Yes. Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, nine zero.
Now we've got that preliminary plat for Brentwood Village, Phase Four. This would be a motion subject to some staff comments. We've also got the revised Brentwood Village, Phase Two, and you've seen this before, but let's have the staff comments if we have them.
So in addition to standard comments, now that the setbacks have increased for both these new phases, that narrows down some of the comments. Planning only has questions about the proposed trail, about if there's any crosswalks with the trail between Phases Two and Four, Street C in Phase Two, and if it's possible to have a green space buffer added between the trail in Lot 98 and the trail in Lot 32 by Street D in Phase Two, and then questions about any lighting or signage that's possibly proposed for the trail.
All right, engineering comments, is this on? Yeah, okay. Most of these have to do with the construction set. I don't think engineering had any comments on the plat itself since we worked out the setback issue, so these will be taken care of in the construction set. Some values are not showing up correctly in the drainage calculations on page 28 of the drainage report. 45 and 60-degree bends in the storm pipe need to be removed. Show dimensions and details for pond outlet structures. Submit a signed and sealed drainage report. Submit landscape plan. Radii need to be 28-foot for fire access, and then a question, will retaining walls be built with the streets or with each home? That was for Phase Four. For Phase Two, is there any landscaping proposed in common areas? Is any fencing proposed in common areas? Show the dimension of the right-of-way dedicated on south edge of property for the future Albright Road. Show details for retaining walls. Walls over four foot must be designed by engineer, same question as before. Show street tree layout as part of civil plans. Show details for pond outlet structure. Show space for the mailbox. Submit signed and sealed PDF of the drainage report. Add a note to the landscape plan that sod is required to the 100-year water surface elevation in detention ponds. Include detail for trickle channels. That sounds like a lot, but we don't have any issues with the plat itself, it's just working out little details with the construction set.
Okay. Thanks, Katie. This would be a motion subject to staff comments, and this would be preliminary plat 2406. We'd need a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Thanks, Brent. Need a second for that?
Second.
Second mark by Mark Cloud.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, nine zero.
Next in line is preliminary plat 24-07. This is the same Brentwood Village, this would be Phase Two, which has been revised. And again, this would be, if there are any staff comments at all, then this would be subject to those staff comments. We've got the staff comments, we need a motion which would be subject to all the comments that have been made. Thanks, Dale. We need a second?
Second.
Second by Brent, thank you.
Two seconds. Brent, right up. Brent, down there. Okay, no, on me. Okay. Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, nine zero. I think you're good to go, thanks.
You guys.
Thanks. We've got a preliminary plat D, this is PP 2405 County Line Square Subdivision, presented by Bates and Associates.
Jeff Bates with Bates and Associates, representing the developer. We're proposing 60 lots on about 21 acres. I think we have everything worked out with staff now and ready to move forward. Also asking for waiver on Pinkley.
Any staff comments on this particular preliminary plat?
In addition to standard comments, update the zoning on the cover page. It's listed incorrectly twice. The lot totals on the cover page as well, they're listed twice and one of the tables is incorrect. And we are requesting a little more detail on the proposed six-foot pine privacy fence or better. Notes on installation, at least upon final plat, to ensure that the lots 53 through 60 have no access to North Pinkley.
Engineering comments. County Line is a collector with 65-foot of right-of-way, just need to update the note on that. We need to take care of stormwater under Pinkley Road, I think we need to put a culvert in there downstream of the pond. Provide a landscape plan that shows street trees in the green space. Show landscape islands in on-street parking lanes on lot lines every 200, 250 feet and at intersections. Parking lane should switch sides periodically to provide traffic calming. Is the sidewalk on Downham Road proposed to be built with a subdivision or paid for? Because I think it was in the estimate for the fee in lieu, but it was shown as not being built. There might just be a discrepancy in the plans there. Show no parking signs. And then for this project, they are proposing a fee in lieu of improvements on Downham Road and County Line Road. They provided an estimate for $93,210.50, which engineering has approved, so when the plat is approved tonight by planning commission, that includes that fee in lieu of improvements.
But you are asking for a waiver of any improvements on Pinkley?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's just a driveway right now.
All right. Let's deal with 2405 first. We would need a motion subject to staff comments on that, a motion in a second.
So motion.
Mark Cloud, motion, we need a second. Second by Howard Austin, thanks, Howard.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. 2408, right below this on your agenda is a waiver to all, the street improvements on North Pinkley. We would need to have a motion that we forward this to a council with our recommendation where we say, we approve it or we deny it.
Has there been any consideration to improve it, at least to the entrance that goes into the subdivision from Pinkley? At least beyond that point, so people can come in and out of the neighborhood? I understand beyond that, especially if there's no access to that road from the other, but that, that interaction seems to be something that we'd want.
The problem is, there's only 25 feet. We dedicated our 25-foot of right-of-way, so there's not really enough room to get the sidewalk, curb gutter, and then a section of street.
It really just functions as a driveway to the house to the north until something is done with the rest of that property.
We would need a motion to grant that waiver, and we'll forward that on to city council. Motion by Howard Austin, we need a second?
Second.
Second by Dale Tyler, thanks.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, thank you. 2406 on your agenda is the Springdale Senior Center. I think you all know where this is located, it's going to be a really neat thing on Emma as you head out to the east. This would be a large-scale motion with staff comments, and it's presented by James Gertz of Earth Plan Design Alternatives.
Hello, I'm James Gertz, EDA, the engineer on the project. I also have Dusty Graham, he's the architect. I'm here to answer any questions you may have on this one.
If there are no questions, perhaps it might be staff comments?
In addition to standard comments, planning, we're noting there's an informal plat in process. Waiver of street improvements have been requested, and on the architectural elevations, the northern street wall shows 21 feet but should reflect 30. That's all for planning.
And engineering has no comments.
Can you cycle through so we can see what the elevations to the plat? There we go.
Any questions or comments from the audience? If not, this comes to the commission. This would be a motion that would be subject to the staff comments that you heard from Sharon and none from Katie, but Sharon.
So motion.
Motion by Mark Cloud, we need a second?
Thanks.
Second by Brent Couch, thank you.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
That part passes unanimously, nine zero. 2401 is the waiver on the street improvements that was referenced earlier on Emma. We forward this recommendation off to city council, either approved or denied.
The improvements to Emma Avenue are being designed as a, well, on project. Yeah, so there's really no sense, I mean, it all comes out of the same money, it's just two different projects, so they shouldn't have to, they can decide which side they want to take the money out of it, but it'll be done as part of that.
Okay, all right, good. We would need a motion on 2401 and a second.
Second.
Second by Mark Cloud.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, nine zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Second page over there on your agenda, 2429, this is 3545 Julio Road. Manuel Palencia Coria and Arturo Aranda, and presented by Anna Navarez and Samuel Palencia.
Hi, my name is Anna, I come to represent my father-in-law, Manuel Palencia, the owner of the house. He building a workshop in the very back on his own yard. The measures are 32 wide and 40 long.
Okay, I think we tabled this last time so we could verify the distances and all that kind of stuff. Ed, you want to talk about this one just a little bit?
Yeah, we never received a survey to verify the distances, and my other comments are, the fire department poses reduction in rear and side setbacks where the fire department has negotiated reductions to the limits of the residential code. They have asked for fire protection instructions such as cement siding and non-combustible soffits or a small building size. This building is 1,280 square feet, more than half the size of the primary structure. The building is 20 feet from the neighbor's building. The building has, does not appear to, that they were going to use combustible siding, they may, may be able to do a change, I'm not sure at this point. The space between the building and the fence is overgrown and not defensible from a fire standpoint. This is exasperated by the narrowness of two sides. And finally, the building was built without a building permit. Both the building and the fire department does not recommend approval.
Thank you, Ed.
Now you discussed the probability of maybe putting cement boarding, siding board perhaps? Would that be a possibility?
It would help, but the issue here is the building is just very large. I mean, it's like putting a single-family dwelling right up against the property line.
Is this on a foundation? I can't even remember. Did they pour a foundation first?
We don't know, we are assuming it is. I mean, again, it was built without a permit, we haven't done any inspections.
Understood.
Any comments from members of the audience on this issue? Hearing none, any comments or questions from commissioners that haven't been asked already?
Do you know if it's on a foundation? Do you know if it's a full slab of concrete, or is it just footings where the walls are? Do you have any idea?
The what? I'm sorry?
The base of the building?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know if it's a full slab of concrete, or is it just?
It's a concrete.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? This would be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Mark Cloud. Call for the vote, Mark Cloud?
Tyler? Austin?
No.
Cardiel?
No.
Cloud?
No.
Compton?
No.
Couch?
No.
Hussein?
No.
Keith?
No.
Reynolds?
No.
The variance request was denied. You have the right to appeal the denial to the City Council. You have to file that within 15 days to the city clerk's office, saying why you think the planning commission's decision is in error, and you have to notify the adjacent property owners. Again, if you don't file that appeal in 15 days, then the structure needs to be removed.
Sorry. Twenty-four oh-five, um, is a waiver request, Harris Parking Lot. This is presented by Will Kelstrom, Watkins Boyer, Gray and Curry, P L L C.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Will Kelstrom, here on behalf of the applicants, Janet and Rick Harris. So, we are asking for a waiver from street and sidewalk improvements. What we are trying to do is to turn an old existing home on Elm Springs Road into a physical therapy clinic. So, essentially, this is a home that has been there for a while, it's an existing house on the edge of Springdale, uh, past the Gene George Roundabout on Elm Springs Road, and they wanted to remodel it to be used as an office for a, a physical therapy clinic, basically just a small professional office. So they rezoned it to commercial, um, in order to get it up to commercial design standards, or rather, um, comply with the code for having a commercial use, there were some minimum parking standards they had to meet, which required 12 additional parking spots, which triggered a submission of a development plan, which triggered the need to do street improvements. So that's kind of how we've gotten here. Um, we are asking these be waived entirely. So, to start, the improvements or the fee in lieu for doing these improvements would be more than the cost of the parking lot itself, or in other words, the improvements that are being asked for would be more than the project that actually triggered them. I think that these types of improvements, sidewalks and road improvements, they make sense when it's a big commercial development, and they're going to cause some impact to the infrastructure, but those improvements have to be commensurate with the project at hand. And what we have here is a, basically a small office that's being required to do street improvements or sidewalks, as if they were a gas station or some kind of other commercial operation. The improvement should also be related to, to the impact that the development is going to have on the infrastructure surrounding it. So again, this is a small physical therapy clinic, it's going to have two physical therapists, they're anticipating about 12 patients a day. No one is going to be walking around as a result of this development like they might be for a gas station, no one's going to be using the sidewalk. And part of that is because there's nowhere to walk from. So I just went and drove around, drove by the property today out on Elm Springs Road, went through that roundabout, and the sidewalk stopped at that roundabout. And then it goes about four or five houses down, and then there's this house. So if we are made to build a sidewalk and do street improvements here, there's going to be a sidewalk that doesn't connect to anything, and again, it's not as if this is a, a major commercial boulevard, we're not waiting on other developments around us to connect to it. These are likely going to stay estate homes for a while. To that same end, it, I don't think there's any plans for Springdale or Elm Springs to extend sidewalks across that stretch. Now, Patsy, you can correct me on that, I don't know if that's true, that's what I've been told, but I'm not aware of any plans to do that. So, um, all that being said, I think that the street improvements and the sidewalk improvements here are probably out of line with the request that's being asked for, which is basically to remodel an, an old house into a professional office, and they don't benefit the public interest. So if you go read the code on when waivers may be granted, um, paragraph D of this section says, "If the planning commission determines that certain improvements or requirements are not necessary for the public interest, or are inappropriate because connecting facilities on nearby or adjacent properties are inadequate or lacking." I think that's what we have here. I don't think that anyone stands to gain from having a sidewalk here, um, and I don't think there's any, gonna, gonna be anything that ever connects to it. So with that, I'm here, and, um, Mr. and Mrs. Harris are here to answer any questions. Thank you all.
Remember, this is a recommendation to council, council actually makes the decision, you guys just make a recommendation.
Thanks for the information.
You'll have to have that same argument at council.
Okay.
Okay.
Any comments from the audience on this particular matter? It comes into the commission, any questions or comments of Mr. Kelstrom?
I'll say engineering's, um, policy is to recommend fee in lieu or bill of assurance for these types of improvements.
This would be a motion, uh, and a second, and we would forward this on with our recommendation to the City Council.
This is a motion to recommend a waiver of the street improvement for this project.
Thank you, Mark, we need a second?
Second.
Second, Ray Cardiel?
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel? Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Passes unanimously, thanks, we'll forward that on to City Council.
Staff will prepare the resolution, it goes to council on the 28th.
Okay.
Thanks, Will. Section six on the agenda is, uh, public hearing, these are rezonings. Uh, these rezonings are all in a call for the vote. Uh, first up is twenty-four sixteen, Erica and Michael Forrest, and that's presented by Erica Forrest. Hi, Erica.
Hello, I'm Erica Forrest, and we're here to, uh, request that this residential property be zoned into a commercial.
They're asking for it to rezone, be rezoned to oh-one, uh, which is a residential office comprised of land use plan indicates slow density residential use. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies as recommended for approval, encourages the development of office and professional uses that provide a transition between residential areas and more intense uses with reasonable building heights, limitations, inadequate buffering and landscaping to ensure compatibility.
Thanks, Patsy. I meant to say, this is at 1,100 East Huntsville Avenue, uh, the recommendation to this change. Any comments from the audience at all? Hearing none, that would come to the commission, this would be a call for the vote, or questions or comments if you have any.
Call for the vote.
Mark Cloud, call for the vote?
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton? Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler? Austin?
Yes.
Thank you, passes unanimously.
Thank you. Staff will prepare the ordinance, it goes to council on the 28th.
The next rezone we have is twenty-four dash seventeen, Iglesia Pentecostas, El Verbo de Deus, presented by Vicente Galvez.
My name is Yacenia, he's requesting me to translate.
Start with, there's been a church at this location for a long time, right? And we're just rezoning it to an institutional so that the church can continue, and they can bring other operations in there that's a church, if they want to bring another church in.
Can you repeat that one more time? Sorry.
The church has been at that location a long time.
Yes.
Okay, we're rezoning to a P1 which allows for a church as a permitted use. And they, so that you can bring another church if you want to rent out your facility or let another group use it, without having to get a conditional use.
Correct.
That's exactly what they want to do.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from members of the audience on this issue? This is on thirteen eighty-three Worth Lane. If there are none, this would come then to the commission, this would be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
I'm sorry, Chris Hussein, thank you, call for the vote?
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton? Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler? Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance, it goes to council on the 28th.
Next on the agenda, twenty-four dash twenty, this is the New Vision Church of God on West End, uh, they want to rezone from an SF2 to a P1, again presented by Will Kelstrom. Will?
Good evening again, Commissioners, Will Kelstrom here on behalf of the applicant, New Vision Church of God, um, not really a whole lot to this one, it's, it's been zoned SF2 since the dawn of time, and there's been a church there for a while, so we just want to get it into compliance.
Land use plan indicates reasonable commercial, the rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies, is uses that commonly have moderate to large-scale assemblies of people such as churches, um, appropriately located in adequate-sized parcels with sufficient space to accommodate the off-street parking and accessory needs.
Thanks, Patsy. Any questions or comments, this is on West End Avenue from the, uh, public? Hearing on this comes to the commission for questions, comments, or this would be a, uh, call for the vote? Call for the vote by Dale Tyler?
Compton? Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler? Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you all.
Staff will prepare the ordinance, it goes to council on the 28th.
Next on the agenda, this is section eight, uh, this is twenty-four dash oh-three, uh, this is on Powell, sixteen fifteen Powell, hangar D, cards, uh, presented by Greg Thomas. Greg?
Uh, hello, my name is Greg Thomas with Garver, um, we're just working to construct a new, uh, hangar and parking lot there on the southwest side of the airport, right off Powell Street, um, this is adjacent to, uh, currently under construction, airport-owned hangar, um, happy to answer any questions that you guys have about the project.
Are there any staff comments on this issue?
Planning only has standard comments, all the airport design standards were met adequately. Engineering's only comment is that this hangar is dependent on the completion of the adjacent hangar, but we're building that, so hopefully we'll finish it.
Thank, Sharon, Katie, thank you. Any questions at all from the audience on our new hangar? That would come to the, uh, commission, it'd be a motion, subject to, uh, any staff comments that you've heard.
So motion.
First motion by Mark Cloud?
Second.
Second by Ray Cardiel?
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler? Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Thank you. Continuing with the large scale, this is on page three of your agenda, this is twenty-four oh-five, Hillcrest Village, uh, Phase Two, and we've got a variance that we would need to cover first, uh, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Dr. Compton, Brandon Rush with ESI, I think the commission is familiar with this, Hillcrest Village Phase Two, um, the variance is kind of tied in with the large-scale changes that we've made, um, we've worked with staff to add more visitor parking throughout the site, highlighted right there in red, um, so we think we've, we've got a good mix of visitor parking throughout the site to hopefully alleviate visitor parking issues, um, and it's the same variance asked to use the garages to count for some of the parking spaces, but...
This is up on Fifty-Sixth Street, uh, the new complex called Hillcrest Village, this is going to be Phase Two. Any questions or comments from the audience? Any staff comments as well?
For planning, I'll note, um, this comment is not for ESI, but for the planning design group who submitted the landscape architecture package, it needs to be updated to include the additional parking that was out, um, that was added to the site plan. Furthermore, for the plans, we're noting the variance that is being sought for the parking requirements, um, to have the attached garage, garages count towards the required parking count at a rate of one space per garage. The lighting plan does not have appropriate coverage for the parking areas, need to check previous existing areas along with the four new spaces added, um, additionally, the pedestrian areas. And for crime prevention through environmental design, there are questions, how's the visitor parking being identified? Need signage shown on the civil set to show the number and location of the visitor parking spaces.
Engineering comments, update flood note to 2024 effective date, privacy fence needs to be moved so it doesn't block the detention outlet, submit a signed and sealed PDF of the drainage report, um, there are some trees on the landscape plan that interfere with storm drainage that need to be moved, um, please show a drainage easement around the area inlet that picks up any off-site drainage, and then submit structural design for retaining walls over four feet.
Thanks, Sharon, Katie, thank you. Any questions at all from the audience that's here? Any questions, uh, from the commission or comments?
Do you know what the elevations are for the street to the driveways in this particular phase? Are they flat, or are they much like several in Phase One? Do you have any input on that?
They are not flat, and they will meet the, um, code for residential driveways in Springdale. It is, it, that is on the drawing, yes.
Do the current driveways meet the code? I'm just curious.
On the Phase One?
Correct.
I haven't measured them, but they don't look like they meet the code.
Thank you.
My only concern is what we've addressed, I guess, in the past, I know they added sixteen to eighteen this time, but I struggle with thinking the spot for the, the garage is adequate, um, to supplement the parking, especially having two other projects brought to us today with parking concerns and adding parking, that this one seems to be... I have nothing to base it on, other than I just have opportunities that this will be enough without people parking on the roads.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? If not, the, we, we would need a motion that's subject to our staff comments, and we would deal with the variance first, and that would be the, that's a call for the vote, I'm sorry, that would be a call for the vote, a variance on the parking requirement that's been requested.
Call for the vote.
Mark Cloud calls for the vote on the variance, this is B twenty-four twelve.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler? Austin?
No.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
No.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
No.
Motion carries six-three on a variance request, and now we would go to the large scale, this would, uh, be twenty-four oh-five, and this would be a motion subject to all the staff comments that you heard earlier.
Motion subject to staff comments?
Thank you, Brian. Second?
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler? Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
No.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Passes eight to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, oh, you're going to stare. Next on the agenda, we've got, uh, this is, uh, large-scale twenty-four twenty-two, and a variance request which is twenty-four dash thirty-seven, this is Premium Brands of NWA, uh, on twelve seventy Kendrick Avenue, presented again by ESI.
Thank you, Brandon Rush at the ESI, um, this is beverage distributor, office, and mostly a warehouse, um, off of Kendrick, you can see it's a pretty large site, um, the variances we're asking for is a reduction of parking from one fifty to ninety-seven, um, that's just based on their current operations and how they, they think they can operate well within ninety-seven. The other variance is for perimeter landscaping. Yeah, it's a concrete tilted, um, building, I think it looks pretty nice, the, uh, perimeter landscaping request is not to provide trees in this area, which is the shared access for how this lot is going to exit Highway two sixty-five, and also within the confines of this fifty-foot-wide high-pressure gas easement, um, so that's the reason for that request, we're, we've got the perimeter landscaping everywhere else.
So on the parking, is it, um, just strictly people working there, there's no people coming in for doing business, per se, it's just, like, no customers, it's just people work?
Right, yeah, no, customers will not be coming here, it's distribution.
Do we have any staff comments here? Sharon? None?
In addition to standard comments, planning requests that all screening type details be shown.
Katie?
Please submit a PDF of the signed and sealed drainage report, and submit the approved R dot permit prior to construction.
Do we know how many employees will work here, Brandon?
We've got the developer here, he can...
Yeah. CFO of the company, uh, we have approximately ninety-five employees, a third of those don't come into the office on a daily basis, a third to forty percent don't come in the office on a daily basis, to answer your question about visitors... A third to 40% don't come to the office on a daily basis. To answer your question about visitors, yes, customers stop by periodically, but it's four to seven a day total. It's mostly we go out and deliver, so they're very, very, very few.
Is this an addition to your current location or replacement of? How many spaces do you have to your current, do you know?
Gravel, parking, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe 40 to 50 max.
Ten-four.
And we fit just fine.
Sure, thanks.
And we run two shifts on our warehouse personnel as well, so they're not all up there at the same time. That's the other 60% of employees.
Would you tell me your name again, please?
Casey Moore.
Kinsey?
C-A-C-E-Y.
And you do have room on there to add some more parking if you need more where you want to be parking on the grass?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
There's plenty of room.
Any comments at all from the public? We've heard our staff comments. As comes to the commission, there've been a few questions. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? If not, we would deal with the variance first. This would be 24-37. This would be a call for the vote on the reduction of parking spaces from 150 to 97. The perimeter landscaping plan, I'm sorry.
Call for the vote.
Thank you, Mark.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler? Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. We would then need a motion subject to staff comments that you've heard on 24-22. This would be the large scale for Premium Brands NWA. This would be a motion subject to staff comments.
So moved.
Motion by Jennifer, thank you.
Second.
Second by Mark Cloud, thank you.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler? Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton? Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Cheers. All right. Continuing with the large scale. This is 24-23 Shiloh Christian Expansion. Design Johnson Road, 1709. They've also got a variance request for commercial design standards. It's presented by Crafton Intel.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ally Carr with Crafton Intel. So this is the Shiloh Christian School expansion that you see on the south side of the campus. We're looking at approximately adding 28 classrooms, a grand hall, which is kind of like a cafeteria, and then they're planning for a future gym off to the east side of it. So that's that large green space that you can see to the west, or to the east, and then the brown is the proposed building expansion. So with this, we're kind of relaying out their parking lot since the new building is going to connect directly adjacent to the existing one. We had to rework the parking in this area to allow for drop-off lanes for the school. And the main variance that we are asking for is for a variance from the foundation landscaping. So the architectural design of this building is a majority of windows that go almost all the way to the ground. And so along the front face of the building or the south side of the building, we're proposing a nine-foot sidewalk directly adjacent to the building, and then these large planters. So it meets the spirit and intent of the code of having those plantings as close to the building as we can while also providing this ADA access. So there's topography change from where the building is going to sit to the parking, and so these planters are broken to where we can have stairways, but then also ADA ramps that will lead pedestrians to the front of the school. And so that's the variance on the south side. You can see those planters all along the south side of the building. We're not proposing to have any foundation landscaping there on the east side, and that's for the future gym expansion over there. They just don't want to put in the landscape and then potentially tear it out here in the next year, year and a half, depending on when that comes in. And then similarly, on the west side, we're not providing any foundation landscaping on the south half of the west side of the building. That's where the main hall will discharge and the fire riser room. So we're providing plantings that's within the fenced playground area, but then providing that egress then to the south for everybody to exit the building there. So that's kind of an overview of that variance, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any staff comments at all about anything that you've heard? Sharon?
Planning only has standard comments.
Engineering has no comments.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the audience members? This would come to the commission. It'd be a motion subject to the comments that you've heard. We've got a variance and a large scale. Any questions or comments from the commission?
In regards to your landscape, do you know what percentage you are of what we typically ask for? I understand what you're doing. I understand what you're saying, but I'm just curious if you've done those counts, how close you are to what we normally require.
No, sir, we have not. But as you can see, really, the only foundation landscaping that we have is in the northeast corner and then the northwest corner, but then providing those planters to meet the spirit and intent right off the main south side of the building. And the existing structure didn't have to have foundation landscaping when a lot of that was built, so we're not going back and fixing that area.
If there are no more questions, this would be a call for the vote on the variance, 24-40.
Call for the vote.
Mark Cloud calls for the vote.
Tyler? Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton? Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. That takes us to the large scale, 24-23. If there are any questions or comments at all, this would be a motion subject to any of the comments that you've heard.
So motion.
Mark Cloud, motions. We need a second.
Second.
Second. Howard Austin, thank you.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton? Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Passes unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good luck with the project. The last of the large scale and variances is 24-24 Holden Buildings on North Thompson. They've got a couple variance requests, screening, lighting, and paving. It's presented by Chris Hardy from CEI.
Chris Hardy, CEI Engineering. So I guess what we're looking to do here, we've been working with staff to get this project through. It is portable storage is what he's selling. So the two variances that we're looking for is paving requirements. The lot is currently gravel. We propose to leave it as it is, not increase any impervious surface. We don't have to. That's kind of what you would see on any type of these lots. Second variance, we did not ask for a lighting variance unless there were deficiencies that we are unaware of. We had that corrected. We submitted photometric, so we can go off that one. The screening we are asking for is between us and the residential lot. The owner of this property, the owner of the residence, he just doesn't want the eight-foot fence built, so we're proposing trees and shrubs and lieu of the eight-foot fence, per his request.
The neighbors are requesting that? Just to clarify, the neighbors are requesting trees and shrubs versus a fence, or the owner?
He owns both properties. He owns the residential and the commercial property.
Ten-four.
He lives in that building, or he lives in the house right next door.
Got it. Understood. Thanks.
This is on 3645 North Thompson. Do we have any staff comments at all on this project?
We do. Planning has standard comments, and in addition to those, planning requests that all corners be pinned before construction, show details of ADA ramps within the plans that provided, and provide parking blocks for all parking stalls provided. Provide a five-foot-wide sidewalk along the full length of the building, along any side that features a customer entrance. Identify the location of all exterior ground-mounted or building-mounted equipment, and identify the screening associated with that.
You good with that?
Engineering comments. A sidewalk is required, minimum 10-foot wide on this street. I think a proposal was submitted for fee-in lieu. We would recommend you just build it, but...
I think the proposal, I think we would rather do the fee-in lieu. There's no parking or there's no sidewalk on either side of us. It's a rather large drop-off to the residential property. It would kind of just be an abandoned sidewalk to nowhere, so at this point, we would prefer to just pay fee-in lieu.
Are you okay, Patsy, with that fee-in lieu for its sidewalking?
Better than not getting anything.
Okay. All right. Okay. We can live with that.
What was the reason for the paving requirements? The variance, the reason for the paving requirements?
The lot is currently gravel, and he just wants to leave it functioning as it is and not increase any impervious surface. It'll function for what they need, staying as gravel lot. And it's been historically a gravel lot for several years, so it was originally a mobile home sales lot. We're just carving off a small piece of it, just above an acre, for him to be able to have his portable building sales. The remainder of the lot is going to stay undeveloped and with the owner, so...
It hasn't been used for several, many years. So you guys had to go back in and reestablish the gravel, right?
I'm sorry.
You had to go back in and reestablish the gravel area that had been there before because it hasn't had anything in it for a long time. You guys did some cleanup, got some shrubs and all that stuff out there. Did you bring some more gravel in? Okay. Cleaned up what was there. Okay.
Curious, how long has the owner lived there, the next-door residence?
All his life.
Is the lighting shown in this photometric, is that existing or proposed new?
I'm sorry?
Lighting that's shown on this lighting calculation plan is that...
All the lighting is going to actually be replaced. There's some existing SWEPCO lighting out there kind of right on the corners. Mr. Boone's already talked to them. They're going to replace that lighting as part of the development, and then he's also, I think, going to have some additional lighting on the building to meet code.
Because the existing lighting out of there isn't pretty much, hadn't been used in a long time.
I just was concerned, looking at this photometric, that it's, you know, we've got what looks to me like floodlighting that's right adjacent to that roadway and could create a glare situation on the road, so...
This comes to the commission with a few variances. We could take them all together, if you'd prefer, or we could take them one at a time. Up to you.
So just we take them all together?
Okay. Ray, thanks for that.
Before we do that, I'm kind of with Jennifer. Of course, it's kind of...
Lighting?
Yeah, I'd like to take lighting separate from the other.
Okay, all right. Let's do that. Let's take the variance request for the screening and the paving, and let's do that as one vote first before we get to large scale. That would require a motion in a second.
It's a call for the vote.
I'm sorry.
Call for the vote for that variance.
Sorry.
For those two variances.
Thank you.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton? Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler? Austin?
Yes.
That passes unanimously on those two variances. Let's go back and revisit the lighting. Mark, did you want to address that? Or Jennifer, did you want to address it in any way? Or any other commissioners want to address that?
Well, yeah, I just think any commercial space should, at minimum, meet our commercial lighting standards because they're not very demanding as they are. So to help somebody, you know, not meet those is concerning to me. So that was my statement.
Okay, did you say that you had already addressed that and you meet the minimum standards?
We submitted a photometric plan. I did not receive any comments back on any deficiencies, so...
They do not meet the minimum standards, specifically in the rear lot where all of the storage is.
Do you want to go back and address that and meet the minimum standards, or do you want us to hear the variance?
He said that we'll go ahead and we'll address that lighting in the back.
Okay.
So no variance for it.
Thank you for that.
So we're taking that variance off?
Yep.
Okay.
That eliminates the variance that you have on your agenda for lighting. That eliminates that. We can now go to the large scale, and this would be a motion subject to staff comments that have been made.
Motion subject to staff comments?
Second.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton? Couch?
Yes.
Hussein? Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler? Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Page four on the agenda. This is B-24-35. The Beasley Family Trust, they want a variance on the side setback from 15 to eight and a half feet, presented by Mark Beasley. Mark?
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. My name's Mark Beasley. My wife and I are co-trustees for the Beasley Family Trust, who this property is owned by. We have been owners there for 30 years. We built the house. It was originally in Bethel Heights. And through the years, we've made several improvements. We added a shop building. And then most recently, 2017, we added an RV cover. And because of the location of our septic system, I went to Bethel Heights and requested a variance on the side setback so I could move it over a little bit where it wouldn't conflict with the septic field lines. And we built the building. We also have an eight-and-a-half by, or eight-by-12 storage shed for tools, just miscellaneous stuff. And we bought it when we built the house, and so it's 30 years old. It's getting dilapidated, in bad repair. We were just going to buy another one to replace it. And I understand that there is an ordinance against having three buildings in a backyard, even though, you know, regardless of the size of the lot. And so I met with a building inspector to look at some options that we might have. One of them was to, when I purchased the new storage shed, have it adjacent to my RV cover and attach the two buildings and make it one. And to do that, I understand I had to come here for the variance, for the existing RV cover. And that's kind of where it is. And I did want to make one correction. It's actually to correct it to six-and-a-half feet rather than eight-and-a-half. I've measured the building, and it's six-and-a-half feet. Decreasing the side setback by eight-and-a-half feet would, this building would be fine there. I hope that makes sense.
We haven't been able to find any of the records of what was approved for a setback from Bethel Heights.
Correct. We cannot find any record of that.
Doesn't mean you didn't get one. It just means that we didn't get those records when Bethel Heights and the city were consolidated, so...
Any comments at all from the audience on the variance request here we have in front of us? If not, that'd come to the commission. This would be a call for the vote, or questions or comments that you may have for Mr. Beasley.
So from looking at the picture, the addition you're adding is on the right side of the structure that's there. Is it just pretty much poles and the covering, the existing thing that's there for the RV?
Yes, it's going to, it's going to... The building setback in the back is 15 feet. The RV cover is probably 18 to 19 feet from the back property line, so it's well within the building setback, and it's going to be, it's going to be right next to it.
He's not making it any worse than it was.
Steve, did you all look at this?
Yeah, we did. Just to be clear, is he eight and a half feet from the property line, or is he within...
No, it's six and a half feet.
So, six and a half feet from the property line?
Yes.
All right. And what type of construction or what type of materials are you using for the building?
The RV cover is a metal carport with a concrete slab.
Okay. And that's been there for some time, correct?
Since 2017.
Okay. And how big was the addition? You said 18 by, the existing is 18 by 40. So, how big is the addition?
The existing building is 18 by 46.
Okay. And how big is the addition?
It's going to be 10 by 20.
Okay. That's 120.
And these are on large lots, so the house to the east, to the west of it is quite a bit off of the property line, too. They're not built right up next to the property line on the other side either. Yeah.
With this being an existing non-conforming, but it's not making the situation anything worse, the addition's less than, is right at 120 square feet. The fire department does have any opposition from this.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
Yes.
Thanks, Dale. This would be a call for the vote on 24-35.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. Call for the vote. Ray, thank you, Ray.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith? Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Austin? Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mark, you need to come get a billing permit.
Okay. Can I do that tomorrow?
Sure.
Okay.
Look at that. He'll tell you yes whether you can get one tomorrow or not.
The next variance request is 24-36. This is Mercedes and Joe Anthony Isles, and it's presented by Mercedes Isles. This is on 1311 Young Street.
Good evening. I'm Anthony Isles, translating for Mercedes. We're here for the variance to increase fence height from three feet to five feet.
This is the type of fence that you're proposing to put?
Yes, ma'am. Sterling iron.
Okay. And you're putting it down the side of the structure and then enclose the front in front of your house itself?
Correct.
Around the tree?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not a corner lot, you know, it's just the driveway.
Any questions at all from members of the audience on this request for variance?
I had one question.
Katie?
How far away from the street are you planning to put the fence?
From the center of the road is anywhere from 13 to 15 feet.
From the center? Okay. So, do you know what that is from the back of the curb about? We just need to make sure it's out of the right-of-way, so...
Two to three feet.
Okay. Okay. Two to three feet. Okay. We'll just have to check and make sure it's out of the right-of-way. I think you should be fine, but we'll have to measure, and we can let you know.
Okay.
So, don't install the fence if it gets approved until they come and we get it. Okay?
Any questions or comments from the commissioners?
What's the purpose of the fence?
For curb appeal and property value. The home was built in 1960, so can't really do much to improve a home that old.
This would be a call for the vote from the commission.
Call for the vote.
Mark Cloud, call for the vote.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Austin? Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud? Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Please make sure you get in touch with engineering, work out the setback.
Thank you.
The next variance request is 24-39. This is JSCT Holdings. They want a variance for the paving requirement, presented by Expedient Civil Engineering.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Christopher Long. I'm representing JSCT Holdings and Expedient Civil Engineering. So, basically, we're asking for a variance for a bill of assurance for two years due to the fact that 56th Street is about to undergo several improvements. The concern is that if we were to put the parking lot in now, we'd have to tear it back out with the 40-inch water line that's coming through and then the stream improvements from the city.
Katie, is two years too long, or could we do it subject to when the road has been accepted?
Yeah, I think that'd be appropriate. I would like to see a bill of assurance on this one for some period of time.
That's what my engineer told me, yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the staff at all? Anybody from the audience have any comments? This would come to the commission again. This is a call for the vote.
And that's with a two-year...
With a two-year bill of assurance.
Yes.
Okay.
Call for the vote.
Thank you, Brent. Call for the vote by Brent.
Hussein?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Austin? Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
That takes us down to Roma numeral 10 on your agenda. This would be a waiver. Leah Villantes and Walter Villatoro, presented by Jonathan Bayona.
Hello. My name is Jonathan Bayona. I'm here to present a subdivision requirements waiver on behalf of Leah Villantes and Walter Villatoro to do a informal, you know, lot split, informal plat on North Monitor. It is a 3.5-acre parcel, and essentially, what they want to do is two acres on the north side and one and a half on the south side.
Okay. Have you had any septic system approvals done on either one of those?
Yes. Both of those.
Okay. And the size of the lot is acceptable for each one?
Yes.
Okay. Can you dedicate right away for the streets on both sides?
Yes.
Okay. So, it would be no street improvements. You're asking for a waiver of subdivision regulations, which means you don't do street improvements, curb gutter sidewalks, any of that, and you get allowed, it's a split to two lots only. That's it.
Yeah.
If they come back, it will, there's no more waivers of subdivision regulations if this one's approved.
Right. Just two.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions or comments at all from the commission? This would be a motion and a second, and we would forward this on to City Council with either a recommendation to approve or deny.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Chris Hussein? We need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ray.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, nine-year-old. Thank you.
Staff will prepare the resolution. It goes to council on the 28th. We need a copy of the septic system approval so that we make sure we have the right. Have you already had it surveyed, and you have it ready to submit?
Yes. It's already been submitted.
Okay.
And I also submitted the septic.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last item on the agenda tonight before we get to the planning director's report is Diesel Downs, Lot 5. This would be large scale, 4894 45th Street. This is an extension for large-scale development, again, presented by ESI.
Thank you. We were just asking for a one-year extension so they can begin construction.
Are there any staff comments on this request for extension? No? Okay. This would be a regular motion and a second. They're just a simple request for an extension on their project.
One-year extension.
One year.
Motion.
Thank you, Brent. We need a second.
Second.
Second by Chris Hussein. Thank you.
Tyler?
Austin? Yes.
Cardiel? Cloud?
Yes.
Compton? Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to planning director's report. Patsy?
The work session on the 21st will be a presentation by H3 Studios on the preliminary information coming from the southeast area housing study and the parking study. And I'd like to, if we can, may or meet in this room so that we could do a mock, trying to vote after we do that and test it out. I think the IT staff is ready to do it. We just kind of need to figure out how this works because we don't, not everything's a set motion like it is for council, and we've got to figure out how are we going to record all those motions and make sure whoever's doing the minutes, like Debbie, gets all this stuff down. So, we'd like to do it if that, if that's okay, Mary. Can we meet in here? Okay. On the 21st, we'll meet in this room. The same presentation will be made to council the night before on the 20th. So, if you can't make one or the other, be here that night before, they may do a little bit shorter version to council because they may have more on their council agenda than what we have on this agenda, but you'll have a chance to answer questions. With any luck, we'll get the draft out to you before the meeting, so you have a chance to look at it. They have some really good information for us on this southeast study. The city council overturned the planning commission's denial of the condition used for the church on Sunset. It is coming back to council with the conditions that were set with the parking, the off-site parking agreement with the Samaritan piece of property. They indicated that they want the church to have a $1 million liability policy that adds them to that policy, and so that'll have to be in place. They can only use those parkings during their hours that they gave us for those operations, so that'll all go to council next Tuesday evening. Like I said, we're going to test the voting out, and what that allows is once the motion is made, then the chairman will ask for a vote, and everybody votes, and it'll come up on the screen. I think I'll cut down on time like that so we can move a little faster, and then there'll be a record of how everybody votes, so... Okay? And I think that's all I have.